It's good.
Today's weather makes you appreciate the last seven days, huh?
One in the vehicle and one in the house.
Okay.
I'm on Terry's car for it all the time. One of those big ones through the golf.
Oh, yeah, then we all could walk together. Okay.
We thought our, me and Nikki and Melissa thought our problems were solved. We got a letter from Chris Renee and excess REA amount to the Village of Walton Hills, you know, and I've seen four hundred and seventy-five thousand. But guess what? Four sixty, four hundred and sixty-six goes to the schools and nine thousand comes to the.
Oh geez.
Oh, the school history. So I guess we need to have you here tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can't be in a while.
So, but nine thousand dollars that we didn't have is nine thousand dollars ahead, right?
What's going on?
I kind of been waiting for, allowing the, depending on the size of your community, you know, like power must get four hundred or something.
Yeah, that was on the news.
Power.
They didn't say what it was about.
Misconduct, yeah.
Everything looks good. We're waiting for Mr. Montello. He didn't tell me he wasn't gonna be here. So let me see where he's at. Hopefully everything is good.
Move everyone. All the way back to general home. You go all the way back to general home.
Eric, you just saved me a task.
Drawing up here. Hey, hey, guys.
What's happening? You are right on time.
Timing is everything.
Timing is everything. As soon as you sit down comfortable, we will start this meeting.
I'm ready to rock. Amen.
Rock and roll.
Rock and roll.
How's everybody? Good?
Mm-hmm.
About that meeting over today, okay? Brad, Jennifer, Diane, Ray. Brian, you all ready?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Like to welcome everybody to the committee of the whole meeting of the Village of Walton Hills of Tuesday, October seventh, twenty twenty-five, at seven oh two P. M. Roll call.
Councilman Nielsen?
Here.
Councilwoman Kanzoni?
Here.
Councilwoman Allen?
Here.
Councilman Spitznepel?
Here.
Councilman Whedon?
Here.
All council present, along with our fiscal officer in the Colcel, our loss listener, John Montello, our fiscal clerk, Melissa Sandberg, and our financial advisor, Matt Stilinski. And we've got one thing on our agenda, and that's pledge of allegiance. So let's do the pledge of allegiance. And we'll start the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Everybody? Any comments related to any agenda items at this time? Like to also welcome any residents or non-residents watching the live stream. We are live streaming it and also taping it through our dispatch department. Okay? We have item four, legislation, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve, authorizing issuance of notes in the amount of not to exceed one million six hundred and fifty-five thousand in anticipation of the issuance of odds. Uh, we do have Matt here tonight to kind of go over that and him and Nikki and Melissa kind of give us a rundown. Matt, do you wanna?
No, you go right ahead. Let the expert speak.
Okay. Uh, good evening. Matt Stilinski, I serve as municipal advisor to the village. Nice to see you all again. We expected this legislation. Uh, we talked about it earlier this year. The intention of the village, as we've talked about earlier this year, was once again, we look to roll, pay down, and roll this note. If we go back to last year, last year we had issued, the village issued one million eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of one-year bands on anticipation notes. Those projects that were financed that are included in that one million eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars are projects that go back to two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. We talked over the course of earlier this year, but, um, like I want to say was late spring, but we talked about trying to accelerate the redemption of some of these notes as they are getting a little long in tooth. I mean, we know that the state of Ohio allows you to roll notes for a project, assuming the useful life is twenty years, you can roll notes for twenty years. But the useful life of roads typically doesn't last twenty years. And so what we discussed was trying to accelerate the redemption. And some of these projects back in two thousand fifteen and sixteen are no doubt road projects that ten years later, we're still paying off. And we know that we'll likely be fixing them, um, before the notes are even paid off on these things. So we are trying to, and we talked about trying to accelerate the repayment of these notes. So we don't have a heavy, uh, additional pay down, but, uh, where we typically, where the village has typically paid on the name in the range of a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand, the fiscal officer and I did have a conversation and the fiscal officer was comfortable paying down a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars on this year's note, which brings the note from a million eight twenty down to one million six five five and the goal. And that actually eliminates one of the old, oldest notes. It was a two thousand fifteen note. It was a smaller note, but it eliminates it altogether. There was only sixty thousand dollars outstanding on it. Uh, but we are gonna pay that one off in its entirety. So that's good that we're getting, clearing the decks of at least one old note. Next on the list really is a note, uh, from two thousand fifteen, currently outstanding in the amount of a, of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And that was for, um, uh, Alexander Road, um, and Northfield Road back in two thousand fifteen. And we're gonna try to pay down all the others as well. There are other four, uh, four notes that are outstanding along with this, Alexander Road note and try to eliminate that. But that is going to be part of the two thousand twenty-six budget process. So we can clearly set aside instead of a hundred and sixty-five thousand, perhaps two hundred and fifty to two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in the two thousand twenty-six budget to eliminate that, that old note as well as pay down on the other four notes that are outstanding. Keep in mind that we do these projects and we consolidate them into one note and they're sold to the market as one, one million six hundred five, six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar bond anticipation note, but it is the components of multiple years, multiple projects that we're piecing together. Interest rates are lower than they have been, uh, over the course of the last year. Uh, interest rates typically, uh, and they haven't moved much from where our conversation was earlier this year, but around three percent is where the reoffer yield is to the investor, and we'd expect that to be the case as we proceed later this month. The ca, the schedule as it currently stands is presenting to, uh, village council, looking for passage on October twenty-first if council's so inclined. That keeps us, keeps us on track for probably selling these notes to investors on or about Oc- October twenty-eighth and closing the note in time, a day before the other notes come due. The village doesn't have that much cash flow that it could pay that note off. So we do need the proceeds of the new note in place to help pay off the old note, the million eight twenty plus interest. So, um, I'll stop there. See if there are any questions.
So, Matt, what I, I just wanted to add, um, we were asked by Joe to have a special council meeting to accept the bid for South Meadow Park, okay? And so with the notes, uh, we put, did put it on the special council meeting too with those other items. So if council wanted to pass it or put it on for first reading, because it is ready to be passed what we have, nothing's gonna change.
Yeah.
So my thing I want on the council, nothing's gonna change with what we have from now until the twenty-first. But the headline is the twenty-first.
Deadline is the twenty-first. I mean, unless there was a, another special council meeting, which I'm.
Right.
Not suggesting you do if you don't have to. Are you, the special meeting tonight then would be considered?
We, we could, yeah.
Could possibly?
It, it's on there. Anybody could pass or we could put it on for first reading, whatever council would like.
The only protocol that we talked about in the past is that before the legislation is considered by council, the fiscal officer certificate that was, uh, presented by Catherine Sworsh from Bricker should be signed and presented from the fiscal officer to the clerk of council, okay, and noted that it was received. And that fiscal officer certificate clearly just is, is for one purpose and one purpose, oh, one per, primary purpose, and that is to evidence that what we are issuing debt for has a five-year useful life. We're not borrowing for any operations. The state law prohibits that. So it just evidences the nature of the projects that are being financed. Five-year use of life. We're financing the same things we financed in years past. All of it qualifies as five years useful life as it has in the past and will again this year. But that should be presented to the clerk of council prior to consideration of the legislation.
Okay, so then we can pass it tonight?
You could.
We could take a five-minute break.
Yeah, just, uh, sign the document for.
Yeah.
One hand to the other.
That's up to comment. Nikki, Nikki is the fiscal officer and.
Yeah.
My vice clerk is.
Yeah, well, and most certainly.
Clerk.
Yeah, could be presented and the legislation could be considered. It just has to be read into the minutes that it was received. So, uh, nothing that precludes you from doing that this evening. Other questions?
Mayor, I've got one question.
Go ahead, Ray.
I'm sorry. In terms of, uh, of paying down, uh, individual, uh, items that are, that are we, that we are indebted for, can we pick and choose which items we choose to pay off or is it just a per schedule, what, what came first, first in, first out?
Good question. You can accelerate any one of the five components and apply more to one of the five than you do the others. But you must pay something down on all of them if the note has been outstanding for more than five years. All right, that's state law again that says you can roll notes, not paying them down for five years, but starting in year six, you must start to pay these down. And of course, that's for one council to not leave an anchor for our next council, that you cannot just leave something and kick it down, kick the can down the road. It must be paid down starting in year six. So we have some flexibility in what those dollars can be applied to. What we're trying to do is first in, first out, trying to take care of those which were first in two thousand fifteen and eliminating those. And we, in fact, applied the additional sixty thousand dollars as well as again, paying down something on all the other notes, applied the additional sixty thousand dollars to the oldest of the notes. And we look to do the same in the future if council's so inclined. But that would seem to be logical to try to eliminate old road projects as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Mayor Corleone, uh, thank you for joining us tonight, Matt. Uh, I have a question regarding, uh, I, I like the idea of accelerating pay down of debt. Um, and with, um, the onset of TIF funds, is it permissible or to allocate, you know, if, if they're available, TIF fund for paying off old infrastructure projects?
Old is the operative word.
Yeah.
You can use TIF funds to pay debt service off on new projects. You cannot use new TIF funds for paying off old projects.
Okay.
All right, it has not, keep in mind, the TIF is supposed to be adjacent to, or a project adjacent to, or that has nexus with the project that created the TIF proceeds. All right, now that may have been an improvement that was done five years ago, but the TIF law doesn't allow you to go back in time and use current TIF to pay off old debt service. If there's a new project, then we've had conversations with the engineer and sat down and tried to identify those future projects wherein TIF could be used to pay debt service. And we should think about that next year if there are projects that are forthcoming, that we might be able to apply resources to pay off the old notes, while we might consider borrowing for some new road program. And again, I, I'm not suggesting we borrow for roads, but if it helps us get rid of the old, apply some dollars to the new road projects, and by that I mean borrow money for new road projects to be paid back with TIF, that's a good use of TIF. Hopefully those dominos fall the right way by everyone's thinking.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions for Matt?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, Matt, I do have several questions for you. I just don't think it appropriate for tonight, so if you could leave your business card with me about other projects that could possibly have debt issue for.
So.
Does that sound weird?
It's very reasonable. Let me just say it this way. I say this in front of the camera. I try to maintain a chain of command so that if I say something to you, everyone hears it. So if we can just do that in a public forum at the next meeting, if there's questions about that.
That's fine, or I can ask you specifically now.
If it's okay with everyone, I, I'd let's say, I'd rather air it because I do, I am sensitive to having multiple conversations.
Sure.
And I, and I, and that has not worked well for me.
I can understand.
In history, um, of one thing being said to one council person and another. So if you have questions, please, by all means.
So there's, there's two things.
Sure.
Um, safety committee is looking at the possibility of a new dispatch center that would come to the tune of approximately four hundred thousand. We haven't had a new dispatch center since nineteen ninety, I believe. So would that be something that we would be able to issue debt for?
As long as we can qualify the useful life of the dispatch equipment at five years, and I've seen that done before. It depends on the nature of the dispatch equipment.
Okay.
But if it meets the five-year test, it can be borrowed for.
Okay. Now, my other question has to also do with the police department. We're in need of four vehicles. And I realize a vehicle may not, you know, qualify as the five years, but what I'm wondering is the twenty thousand dollars that's needed for each vehicle to outfit it properly, would that qualify to be issued as debt?
Yeah, I would, that's a slippery, slippery slope.
Okay.
Um, I would not. Um, typically that can get built into an operating lease. I would think you just, that's all packaged up and we get an operating lease for those. That's the better path.
Okay.
For those improvements than issuing debt for those enhancements to the vehicle.
Okay.
You know, that's, I wouldn't go down that path.
Okay.
I hope that, that answers your question.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Sure, sure, sure.
So with that said, are you having a safety committee and insurance meeting soon here before the twenty-first to make the decision whether the, are we keeping the note? What, what is the game plan here?
Well, the chief is on vacation this week.
Okay.
So we wouldn't be able to meet until next week at least with. So.
I mean, it's up to you. You, you know, we can put it on for first reading and you can do that, or you can go to a vote tonight. It's what, what, I don't know if you guys have been talking about this for a while or what your game plan is. Yo, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. Has, has not related to the safety piece, but bringing that up and hearing some potential, uh, considerations for, uh, other items, uh, I, I, that, that, that may be eligible to issue debt. I, I will say personally, you know, I, I, I love to see a pay-as-you-go kind of system as we have been trying to do, uh, although we have had some debt and some leases and some things like that. Uh, as it relates to this legislation, I, I think with that conversation, Mayor, and the fact that, uh, it would be good, I think it would be good to hear from Nicole next week, when we typically have our, our finance update just to see where we are. Uh, we know we have some other large projects for next year. And again, yes, I, I am, I, I like the idea that right now we are not looking at adding new debt. But I think it would be, for me, it would be more comfortable just to see where we are next week, do the doc, the document, the left-hand to right-hand document and, uh, and put this on for a first read.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. Well, the purpose was to get, get it on.
Yep.
Get some conversation, go and have you look at it, have Matt here and, uh, uh, any questions? Matt, would you be avail, available next week too, or unless, unless we don't think there's any questions for Matt? Maybe communicate that with Nikki or myself and.
I don't have any questions.
Yeah, I mean, there's a question, by all means, happen to answer it by email if that's, if that helps and share that with council. I think I shared a memo with council.
Yeah.
Prior.
Okay.
That's fine. Um, I am in town and available, so.
Oh, good.
And but.
That helps.
I'd prefer to be here for the council meeting as the, I mean, the council meeting's not till the twenty-first though, so next week is council of the whole?
Committee of the whole.
Committee, I'm sorry, committee of the whole?
Yeah.
Either, either one.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's good to know.
Yeah, wide open.
If we still have questions, then it gives us a little more time to find an answer for the council.
Yeah, most importantly, it just reinforces the legislation, either at one million six five five or, or lesser dollar amount needs to be passed in order to proceed with the note issue to pay off the old note issue. The village just doesn't have that type of cash to pay off, uh, the note in that magnitude. So.
But you wanna, you wanna repeat that for everybody, Matt?
Uh, one way or, uh, one way or another, the no legislation, either as it's drafted at one million six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars or less, okay, has to be approved in order to issue the new series of notes in time to close it and pay off the old note. It's just the village doesn't have free cash flow of a million six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to pay off the note in it, what, what's coming due in its entirety. So that's my only reinforcing comment.
Right.
Gentle, gently, as, but gentle as I can. But we don't have other options other than to renew the note and pay it, pay it down, renew it. And when we get to next year's budget, we'll talk about it more in terms of these projects coming online and how to best use the resources of the village to try to eliminate some of these old notes and, like I said, debt. I, and I don't want to prolong this, I am highly sensitive to what's happening in the state with property taxes. And trying to preserve cash to serve as a, we'll call it a backup plan for something that might happen and temporarily disrupt our funding is a good idea at this stage of the game, to try to preserve cash as best we can. I understand, page go for as much as you can, but we've got to get some clarity around property taxes in the state before we start drawing down reserves because we may need those reserves to fill a gap that the state's not thinking about. They're just thinking about their next election. I'm trying not to be political here, but property tax, I always say, the foundation of this country was built on tax revolt. If given the opportunity to repeal taxes, people will do it. Right? That's our foundation of our country. So I am trying to guide people, try to keep our eye on reserves and cash as best you can to help, we'll call it, maybe fill a gap. That might come by way of some actions the state takes. And with that, I'll stop my, my preaching.
Matt, we appreciate that, uh, because we, we appreciate the guidance we get from Nicole and Melissa. And you are, you know, we have you on staff for that reason, because, you know, Nikki sees a lot of local and they go to the stuff, but you, you know, you're dealing with a lot of communities and, and, and that is a big issue.
No doubt.
We're, we're fortunate, uh, that property tax doesn't fund us as much as some communities.
No doubt.
Some communities are really because the leadership doesn't want to pay the property tax either, but they also know that there's no other way to keep your community running without it. And no one's given the answer that if it goes away, how will they survive?
That's our problem. That's our problem.
We're not as bad as some communities, but there's some communities who take the liquid or somewhere. It's all property tax.
Yeah, it's a big problem if it goes, if it proceeds.
So I'm, I'm glad you gave that little tidbit because those are the things sometimes we don't, we, we need to hear that future for us. Because we do have budget, as Ray said, coming up and Nikki looking at all that and stuff, so thank you for that. Any other questions for Matt? Any questions from anybody here in the audience or any questions from anybody watching the live stream?
No.
Well, you're welcome to always stay, Matt.
Thank you for the invite. Very much appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good to see you all. Glad you're all welcome.
Thank you.
Try to stay dry.
Yeah. Okay, we have item B, resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven, establishing a policy on reemployment of Ohio public employees. Okay? So, um, Ryan, John, Nikki, myself, Melissa kind of all have been working on that. And, uh, we thought it was important to follow the OPRS, their guidelines also. So John did draft legislation for that. And we wanted to present it. We did, I did put it on the meeting, special council meeting. It's not something that does need to be passed tonight. We want to put it on for first reading also. I know we have talked about this, um, for a while. I know Councilwoman Kanzoni asked about it not too long ago, along with some other council members. Um, so take a look at it and.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, this policy came from where? Ryan drafted it? Is this straight out of OPRs?
It's a combination. You'll see if you read it, he took it and it's written with us, retirees must inform the Village of Walton Hills and stuff. So this is, Ryan put this together.
Okay.
This was from Ryan, from HR Partners, our third-party, um, HR consultants. Put that together. And then John, along with Ryan, worked on the legislation.
Mayor Corleone?
Yes. Um. Go ahead, Ray.
I just, I just have one, one question before we, you know, dig into this a little bit more. I, I do concur. This is probably, this should be another first read. Uh, but the paragraph that talks about, uh, public notice, uh, and hearings, um, is this, is this kind of talking related to, um, well, it says, it says, OPRs position that is customarily filled by a vote of members of the board or commission or by the legislative authority. So is that, it's like if you were appointing someone, I won't necessarily position, you're appointing someone that, uh, council also concurs or votes on. We're talking about all of those types of positions. Is that what that is?
Go ahead, John. I want you to answer.
Yes, sir. That's exactly what that is, so. Yes.
Anything else you can add to that or just kind of?
No, it's, it's customary that, uh, that, uh, usually it's a, I've never heard of it for like a department head per se, but, you know, for like a service director or, but, uh, or a police chief, that, that's automatic, I guess, the police chief. They get to join their retirement program. They're, they're all in drop, I think, unless they truly retire. So there's no permission given. Well, that's really not an OPRS position now that I'm thinking about it. That's not OPRS. And then, um.
And this is in addition, after we talked about to our policy. And this is in addition, after we talked about to our policy we have there, if you look at section three, that any such employer retires and rehired shall be treated as a resignation in regard to seniority rights as dictated by Walton Hills Quotified Ordinance 260.14.
Where are you reading, Mayor?
In the legislation, item three.
But I think the answer to your question.
Shouldn't that be written in the policy? I'm sorry, John.
No, because this is, this is, if you read, DICA, OPRS, this legislation is a combination of our ordinance and this.
Okay.
If that's acceptable according to what John put together.
I've got a question. Did you, I'm sorry.
I think any, it implies that anybody you guys appoint needs to be, have a public hearing. So I would say that's the safest interpretation. I've only seen it for finance director and a law director, but not other employees. But I assume it's the same thing if you ask me, so.
And if you look, the village is not obligated to rehire retired employees. So that's in there too. Because I've had questions on, you know, we've talked about that, you know. But you can take a look at it and you see something. But we felt we needed to get something in the books. And feel this is a very fair policy.
Mr. Mayor, asking Mr. Montello for Councilman Whedon's question about the positions that are customarily filled by a vote of council. You are saying that you would agree that, or you would state that we should have a public meeting for those employees who are not subject to a vote of? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying only if they are.
Only if they are. So that was my question if by, because this only, this only talks about people who are subject. It says nothing about people who are not subject. So my question then is, should that be in there? People, what happens to people who are not subject or by omission? It doesn't, you know, what's the interpretation?
It's still up to the discretion of council, but pursuant to the ordinance, but that's, I don't see anything wrong with if you wanted to have a public hearing for any employee for that matter. It wouldn't be a bad idea, I suppose. But I think the theory was that you guys are in charge of your department heads and the administrative mayor is usually in charge of the employees. And that's why OPRS doesn't require approval for those people. You don't really have a direct authority over.
Right, so we are interpreting this as if the administration wants to hire a person who is not in a position to be voted upon, a public hearing is not required. That's how this is interpreted, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
But we also say that, you know, the way it's worded, we do want council to, you know, to approve it, even if it's a non, you know, appointed position, any employee. Probably, you know, that's the way the ordinance is worded unless you don't.
Oh, this way the ordinance is worded? Okay, I'm looking at, so you've got two different things. Okay, okay.
And I could have Ryan, I could have Ryan here next week too.
That'd be helpful.
If he wants.
I think that'll be helpful.
We felt you wanted to be involved with the decision, so that's why we put that in there, you know, make it so. Probably not necessarily, but wanted to be transparent. So my guess would be we, you know, you have a proposal for whatever the terms will be, subject to your approval. You know, so present whoever the employee, if someone decides to propose it, they need to tell you rehire it.
Yeah, I was reading this as a document in and of itself, but you can't. You got to read them both.
And I think we're going to, we talked about this after, we might have to make a note, make this, you know, document, not document, attachment A or whatever, a little more clearer in there.
Could you repeat that, Mayor?
Make this an attachment in the resolution. Along with, we're citing 260.14, but we should also cite this probably to make this however you see fit. Do you guys agree with that?
Yeah, just part of the resolution.
So, yeah, it's long, so you just make it whether, I mean, it kind, it says that set of policy of reemployment. It says, and that's where we got it covered here. It's the exact words, but I think it'd be better just to make this attachment A, whatever you think, John.
Yeah, it says, Mr. Mayor, section one adopts the attached policy incorporated herein.
Right.
So, yeah.
And so we should put attached policy on this. So you see, that's all I'm saying.
I was just going to exhibit it.
Yeah, yeah, right, or exhibit it. It's not, nothing.
I wanted to change section three a little bit. Doesn't work quite, read quite right. It says that any such employee, so that any employee who retires and is rehired shall, I've got to think of the language a little bit, shall be treated as a, you know, you just got to clean up the language a little bit. Let me think about that one. Just because it sounds like a little funny there with the wording, but I'll figure that out.
So if we can, we can put it up for first reading and we have time to tweak it.
If we think we pass it tonight, that's for sure.
Yeah, no, I.
We just wanted to move it along.
Yeah, we've been talking about it, wanted to get it moving on. Any questions related to item B?
Item B, this one?
Yeah, that was item B, yeah. I'll see if Ryan, we'll see Nikki if Ryan can come in the next meeting. Okay. Any questions from any residents, non-residents, anybody watching the live stream? Okay. We have item C, Resolution 2025-38, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with CMG Contracting LLC for the South Metal Park Drive coalwork replacement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do not have any of that paperwork. Okay, I did not see it because there wasn't anything in the packet.
I have it, we have the electronic version.
It was in the electronic.
Resolution, but not the hard copy or the bid docs.
Do you want to make a copy of it, Nikki?
Does everybody want a copy?
Yes.
Thank you. You're welcome. You know I was here Monday afternoon. I come and get my hard copies.
Mayor Colgraff, if I may just say, in a general sense, while we're waiting on those copies, it's a good thing to see this project coming forward. It's something that the village, not just council, but some residents, of course, have been anticipating and looking forward to that, that project. And it's good to see that it did get out for bid and there is a recommendation coming forth. We'll, you know, look through that real quick. I'm happy that we are at this point of having this resolution.
I agree.
We have sushi, need some help.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
While we're waiting, if I could just say, and maybe we can remember this, next year, I've had several residents that have been very upset the way that the branch chipping was labeled in the Journal and the Owl. It was listed as last Friday and residents didn't know. I know there were signs out around the village saying it ends on the first. I know it was in the Owl, I know it was in the Journal. But if we could just advertise that a little better next year. Because there have been several residents that contacted me, they were upset. They hurried up and tried to get all their branches done by next Friday, well, last Friday. And they haven't been picked up yet. Are they going to be picked up? I told them usually when there's several houses out or we have storms, they will go and, you know, do branches also. But not everybody reads the Owl or the Journal or sees signs on the road.
I know we've probably, every year we kind of reiterate it and I'll just say it again to answer to that. The service director comes up with a schedule and he has to have a time where it ends. Okay? And what we do, I'll finish, please. What we do do is we always go past it. But if you don't put a date, then just don't have, because now we're starting getting into leaf. Okay? So, thank you. You can let the residents know that they'll be out again, which they always do. But if we don't put a time, then we will not only have a big rush that won't be spread out, it will go on forever. And all we can do is council and administration to say, when you're looking for leaf or chipping, start looking in the fall, look at those publications or call. They can call the service department. Lisa would be glad to say, hey, we're chipping this week, we're not chipping this week. That is really probably one of the best advice I could give you. If they have a hard time with electronic, and I understand that, some people don't find a computer. They do get a journal, maybe they misplace it. They can always call the service department and Lisa would be glad to help them. She does a great job, like all the staff in communicating with that. So that would be another way to let them know. But it's just, you know.
I did explain to the residents each time that the chipper has to be swapped for the leifer. And it's not a light business to go from one to the other, you know. And so that's why there's usually a deadline. But I did tell them usually the street commissioner, if he sees there's quite a few people, they'll switch back over to take care of what's there. But I did advise them to try the building department. But they asked me to bring it up at the meeting and I said I would, so I brought it up.
No, that's fine. That's, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll backtrack to the notes real quick. Just want to let everybody know, I looked at the stuff as far as our payoffs. And I agree with accelerating, you know, these things and paying off. In 22, 2022, we had $2 million worth of notes. 23, it was $1,920,000. 24 is $1,820,000, as Mr. Stazinski said. And this year's $1,655,000. So we are making headway and we are paying off those. Although, again, Mr. Stazinski said that he'd like to see, you know, the older notes paid off a little quicker because they're getting long in the tooth. But we are progressing very nicely, I think, in paying off what we owe.
Okay, so we're on item C. We have the letter from Joe, the recommendation letter, seven bid proposals. I can read, I'll just read this in record to short. Go ahead, Ray.
We don't have the CMG piece, we only have three of the bids.
What's that?
Well, my packet only has three of the bids.
Four.
Doesn't have, doesn't have a recommended.
Yeah, no, we only got three of the bids.
Yeah, doesn't have CMG.
Well, maybe.
Oh, it didn't print the second side. You want me to?
At least just, at least CMG. Mayor Colgraff, just a quick note. I understand the concern that some of our residents may have regarding chipping. I just want to share what I, a message that I shared with the street commissioner on October 1st or October 2nd. Being that October 1st was the last day, was posted last day for chipping. And there were leafers out on the 2nd. And I actually called the commissioner to thank him for making our residents happy as they always do for that very quick turnaround and getting those leaves up. And here's, here's the other piece I told him. I had some branches myself that I didn't get out. Like, well, I guess I'll just have to wait for that windstorm to blow stuff down when you guys come back. Then I'll pull them out. That was my message to the commissioner.
Or stack them and wait till spring.
Right. Stack them in the backyard.
Do what you got to do.
What we all do know is we live in a community with a very good service department who is limited with the staff they have and tries to cater to our residents the best they can within the timeframes they have and the hours they have. So I think in the long run, everybody will get their branches chipped and their leaves picked up.
It all works out.
Might be a few that might miss it, but that's there. And I really, you know, so, and that's okay. It's all good. I appreciate that, Ray.
Just hold back the snow, somebody, so we don't have leaves under snow. Hold that back.
Mid-November says the farmer's almanac.
There you go.
Well, I didn't see a woolly bear until yesterday. It was the first time I saw my first woolly bear this season yesterday. And it wasn't, it didn't even have a typical woolly bear color, so I don't know what that means for winter.
Can't ask Dick Utter anymore.
It was moving kind of fast, so I will say that. It was a fast-moving woolly bear.
Did everybody receive the package with George Smaraggin's recommendation letter? Okay, so we got that, just in case we need to make more copies. So you have that?
I did not. Is it, was it in the mailbox?
Yeah.
Oh, I did get, it wasn't, yours was colored, I'm sorry.
Just while we're waiting, I thought. So John's putting legislation together for that. There's just a lot there, so that's why it's not on the agenda. I mean, for, you know, special councilmen, otherwise I would have had that on there for first reading too. But we at least wanted to get it out, same as the other stuff, so you can take a look at it. We did, it did go to planning commission, Ray, as a planning commission member along with myself. They go to planning commission, George Smaraggin took a look at it and put this together and felt we should adopt it. And the planning commission voted to approve it and move it to council.
Very good. Mr. Mayor?
So it's a matter of us taking a look at it any way we want. John's going to put the legislation, get a little bit of legislation on next Tuesday, think, John?
Sure, yes, I'll have a draft for you.
Yep, and then decide what we will, you know, if you're good with it. The suggestion is, at least from George, is to get something out of the books. Get more and more popular and that's where it is. And we can always even tweak it at a later date too. But to get something out of the books.
Mr. Mayor, was there any revisions from the planning commission or is this as submitted to the planning commission? Okay, very good, thank you.
And we, I'll kind of go through that again. I thought I'd just make sure we have the packets, so.
Mr. Mayor? Is George going to be here to answer any of these questions or you'll know the answers?
I could have him here if you do. Why don't you take a look at it and see if you have any? But I could have him here. I mean, we kind of edited through the planning too. I mean, if you have any questions, I am relating to it. I can see if George could come in next week.
Or someone else. I wasn't on council at the time of this, so I'm sure the questions, you guys probably already know what the answers.
Mr. Mayor?
Maybe not.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
But yeah, I can see, that's not a problem.
If we don't, we'll just make something up.
He probably have no problem. I mean, he'll come, it's just a matter, you know, if he has a day. If not, if he can't come that day, I'll see if he can come the following. George.
It was recorded with the planning commission meeting also, correct? A lot of questions were raised at that time, if anybody wanted to watch it.
Maybe I can go, but do you know what year that was? I could go back and listen to it?
Last week.
Oh, these?
Yeah, this, this was just, uh, Georgia's letter here, as you can see, is from October first.
Well, I'll go back and listen to the meeting.
Yeah, I don't know if you're gonna agree a lot, but we need, let me see if George is here, if he's gonna be here, if he has questions for that, that's not a problem.
I didn't know how in-depth he got.
Yeah, we did. George and Rob looked at this along with Joe and he's pretty familiar with it from some other communities that have adopted. Okay, so let's get back to South Meadow Park. Do we have, do we have everything in front of us now?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say I'm amazed at how some of these bids are so different.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So I am good with CMG.
Thank you, Nicole, Mayor. I don't have any additional, any other questions after reviewing, uh, the packet here. Um, again, just, just happy to see that this project is, uh, at this stage of being ready to be, uh, contract awarded. Of course, we know season, this, season is what it is. And, um, I'm, I'm good with this as a suspension item.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody in the audience, any residents, non-residents watching the live stream? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I don't see the start date on, on mine. I've, and I don't have the, uh.
Just thirty days after signing the contract. It's in the, on the small print at the bottom of the quote.
Okay, there it is. So the sooner we can sign this contract and get it moving.
Yes, and hopefully, you know, if their schedule permits, less, they'll start less than that thirty days.
Yeah, well, going back to what she was saying about the, the cost and the price, we've been through this before. Companies, companies don't have work right now, or they have material, or whatever. And, uh, you know, a lot of companies can come in under, you know, we've seen it before. So with the pumping station.
Right.
So they were in and out.
Less than half even, of some of the other ones.
Yeah, they were in and out and done before anybody even knew that they were here. So, I mean, you know, it happens. But I, I'm in agreement with this. I mean, it's, uh, if, once again, if Joe, Joe's certainly signed off on this, uh, I'm, I'm all for it, so.
Okay. If everybody's good, well, I can ask for suspension, huh? Just, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just add one general, uh, question. I know there, there is an item on here for, uh, pavement resurfacing. Uh, and this is, this is, this type of project, I, I don't believe actually requires like a total road closure? Maybe, you know, reduce lane or some, at some point, there's, there's no road closures involved with this project?
Um, I can, I'll, I'll talk to Joe about that, answer that in the next meeting. If I'm not mistaken, they're gonna maintain one lane, but let me confirm that for sure, right? I think we, it even came up during our infrastructure, infrastructure, about whether they're gonna maintain one lane. But I don't wanna say right now, be wrong, exactly. I definitely wish to find out from Joe or, or Rob. So I'll get that answer to you. But I don't think it should slow us with approving it, because we're gonna have, we're gonna have to do it one way or the other.
After what we just went through with Alexander, I think our, our residents can adjust pretty, pretty good.
Oh, my goodness, hallelujah, that opened up.
Okay, any other questions before we ask for any other business?
Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes.
I'm not sure everybody got a copy of the actual legislation, twenty twenty-five thirty-eight.
It's not on the committee of the whole?
Is it attached?
Which one?
Twenty twenty-five thirty-eight resolution.
It was in the electronic one, I believe. Is that written? No, we don't have it. I don't have it.
Okay, I should probably go ahead and make a copy real quick. We have thirty-seven, but not thirty-eight.
Mayor, can I see your copy of the George Smarigan memo, I just wanna see if I change that.
Because the resolution had the dollar amount in it, that's what I, how I knew the dollar amount.
Right.
On the electronic version.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
While we wait, can I remind everybody about Sunday, that we have our haunted hayride, Sunday from five-thirty to eight-thirty? And there'll be crafts and games for the kids to play, and then, of course, the haunted hayride, which everyone enjoyed. And I enjoyed participating in it last year. Of course, nobody's recognizing me, but I was in it, and I'll be there again. So it was a lot of fun. So hopefully, we get a good turnout again this year.
And it, it's Sunday?
Yes.
Which, uh, I think you guys talked about when you made it that day. Should work out nice. How's the weather looking?
Good.
Good, good.
Good for Sunday, mm-hmm.
We, we get a good turnout, even if it is raining, I guess it makes it a little spookier, but, but who wants that? You might try whether you're sitting on a, yeah.
I think it's sunny for the next week or so.
Right, so that's nice. Everybody should come out and experience it, and bring family and friends. Adults love it as much as the kids.
Mm-hmm, there's a lot of adults on the hayride going around.
Yeah, that's a nice event.
Thirty-five percent chance of rain.
That's not bad, we'll take that.
Thank you. Thirty-five was going up, I saw, I checked, it was twenty.
We had such a hard time at this point.
I got it.
Everything's fixable.
Melissa.
I'm playing it on Melissa.
I think, oh, I was gonna say, I was gonna help you, I, I was gonna say, I think she thinks she's already on a little vacation or, uh, had her, uh.
Other things on my mind.
Nikki's gonna be off this, well, you're gonna be at training during the week, but then off down the road. So we've kinda been teasing every, teasing her a little bit. But, right, Melissa, so. Nah, it's not, that's my fault too. I, all of us usually take a good look at it and we were trying to get a lot done, also, some other things, so it's all good. Okay, so everybody has everything now? Any other questions on, uh, COW meeting? I'll just, go ahead, Ryan.
Uh, just one question, uh, for clarification for the special council meeting. Uh, the legislation authorizing the issuance of notes, are we going to? We came to the conclusion Nikki's gonna sign it and we're gonna pass that, correct?
I thought it was a different conclusion than that, but you guys told me.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I had, uh, asked if we could see, just, just to exactly see where we are with, uh, finances that we typically do on the second uh, meeting and just, uh, and with other paydowns and other projects, and then voted on the twenty-first, we'll still be in good time, if that's, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
I just wanted to be on the same page.
I, I don't think Matt would need to come back, it's just a matter of seeing where we're at.
Well, it doesn't matter now, we're not voting on it. Yeah, you'd have to sign it.
For Monday, yeah.
Yeah, sure. So let me just kinda recap. So you guys, you just touched base on it right now. Uh, legislation A, order twenty twenty-five dash twelve. Uh, we're gonna go with first reading. At that time, we don't think we need Matt out. If we do, we'd rather save it for the council meeting, or would you rather have him come to the next COW?
No.
Okay, everybody's good with that, so no Matt yet at the next, not, he won't be at the, the COW meeting. Okay, and then we have resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven, item B, establishing a policy on reemployment. John's gonna make a couple adjustments to the legislation, so we would go first reading there. If everybody's good with that, and then, uh, I'll see if Ryan can come to our meeting. Okay, and answer any questions? And then we have item C, uh, which I'd like to ask for suspension. Joe was asking for that, so he'd like to, uh, accept the, the bid that we have in front of us and move forward with the project. And then we have item five, chapter, chapter twelve seventy-six, alternate energy facilities. We wanted to get something there relating to alternate energy facilities, which encompasses solar panels. So you'd like to see if I can get George here to talk about that. And you're gonna look to see if you think anything needs to be added for that. So we would, uh, first reading on that. But we don't have it, we don't have this, so I'll just have George come here, then we'll get it to the next. I'll put it, we won't have a special meeting, I wasn't gonna have a special meeting next Tuesday, we'll just have the council. We'll have our discussions, so I'll have George there. So I'll have Ryan and George at the next meeting. Okay, any other business?
Uh, Mayor, Mayor Colograph?
Yes?
Just wanted to, uh, make comment, uh, regarding, uh, this is for a public see. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-five thirty-eight and the, uh, contract for the South Meadow Park, um, drive culvert and, uh, replacement, that, you know, the one hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars, nine hundred and four dollars and seventy cent is a reimbursable, uh, project. So that village doesn't have to pay all of it, we have to pay it money, have to pay the contractor, but that's a reimbursable contract through, um, uh, partnership program with the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District.
So we will be reimbursed for the total cost of that project?
Which is a good thing.
Right. Any other comments? I know Diane mentioned the hayride on Sunday. Hope to see everybody there. Any other other business? Any other business from our residents, non-residents, anybody watching live stream? Can I ask for a adjournment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for adjournment of the committee of the whole meeting Tuesday, October seventh at eight oh two.
Second.
Second, second by councilman, we did, vote on the motion.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kanzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Does anybody need to take a break for a minute, or you wanna go right into the meeting? Okay, all right. We have it all in one, so, good evening, everybody. Like to welcome everybody to the special council meeting of Tuesday, uh, October seventh, Village of Walton Hills, twenty twenty-five, at eight oh three PM. We just had a, uh, COW meeting. We called this special council meeting for some legislation. Roll call, please. Good night, ladies.
Councilman Nielsen?
Here.
Councilwoman Kanzoni?
Here.
Councilwoman Allen?
Here.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Here.
Councilman Whedon?
Here.
All of council present, along with our fiscal officer, Nicole Self, our law director, uh, John Montello, and our fiscal clerk, Melissa Sanderson. Okay, we have legislation. Who would like to introduce that for first reading?
Mayor Colograph. I like, um, Mayor Colograph, members of council, I'd like to introduce ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twelve, authorizing the issuance of notes in the amount of not to exceed one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for a first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, you do second, don't you? You have first reading?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make an amendment to that, the one million six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
What did you say?
I, I, I'll say it again.
You said a hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Okay.
I'll take that one.
Well, let me just reread it.
Yeah, we'll just, thank you for catching that.
Thank you, thank you. Mayor Colograph, members of council, I'd like to introduce ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twelve, authorizing the issuance of notes in the amount of not to exceed one million six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds. First reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, we have item B. There's no vote on it, right, John? Just second, or do you vote on that?
No, you can vote on it, why not?
Okay, all right. Go ahead and have everybody vote on first reading.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kanzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve was voted on as passed for first reading. We have item B, resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five thirty-seven.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to introduce for first reading a resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven, a resolution establishing a policy on reemployment of Ohio public employees' retirement, OPRS, age and service retirees, and declaring an emergency.
Second?
Second, vote on first reading.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kanzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Okay, first reading passed. We have item C, resolution twenty. What's that?
Go ahead.
What was that for? Everything good?
Yeah, I was just gonna introduce.
All right, that's fine, that's good. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight, we'd like to introduce that for suspension.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to make an amendment to that resolution.
Okay.
Um, section one, the dollar amount should be one hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and four dollars and seventy cents.
Take a look here.
Yes. Six.
Somebody's trying to scam another two grand.
Okay.
Do we vote on the amendment then?
John, how should we do this? Okay, so, what, go ahead, uh, Councilwoman Allen, what was the amendment?
The amendment is for resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight. Section one, the dollar amount should read one hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and four dollars and seventy cents.
Is there a second for the amendment?
Second.
Or do we vote on, is it easier to vote on the, uh, resolution with the amendment? Or would you rather, what, how would you?
Yeah, since they voted on it, just do the amendment this time, you could do that.
Okay, all right, then we'll do, then we can do those, then we can do the motion, uh, the resolution with the amendment.
Yes.
Okay, vote on the amendment. Who, did we second it?
Yes.
Okay, Diane did, okay. Vote on the amendment.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kanzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Okay, amendment passed, can we, uh...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce with the amendment for suspension, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with CMG Contracting LLC for the South Meadow Park Drive Culvert Replacement Project and Declaring an Emergency.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, vote on the suspension.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kanzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Okay, suspension passed by all.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for adoption of resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight.
Second.
Second by Council Nielsen. Vote on the adoption.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kanzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Okay, adoption passed for resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight. Thank you, everybody. Anything, anything anybody wants to add before we, I ask for adjournment? I recap the COW meeting, for our COW meeting estimate already, so I think we're set. We have a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
Is there a second?
Second.